Four, three, two, one. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening and welcome to the Town of Rockland Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Please direct your attention to Selectmen Needham, who's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America in which it stands with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tiffany. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by W R P S for playback on Comcast, Channel fourteen and Verizon, Channel thirty-one. It's also available live online at www.wrpsrockland.com backslash TV. And within twenty-four hours, the video on demand at www.youtube.com backslash wrpsrockland. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Next on the agenda, community announcements.
Thanks, Mike. Biggest community announcement I have is obviously the governor's opening up of the state from all the previous COVID restrictions. So just to state the highlights, the governor and the Department of Public Health are eliminating all of the COVID- nineteen restrictions effective May twenty-ninth. And they'll be lifting the governor's state of emergency effective June fifteenth. So what that means practically for all of our boards and committees in town is that we'll all be going back to in-person, in-person, live, physical meetings like before. It's unclear if the governor is going to work with the state legislature to adopt any permanent changes to the open meeting law to allow the kinds of remote Zoom meetings like we're doing tonight to continue after that state of emergency ends on June fifteenth. It's unclear if that's going to happen or not. So I think we all should be prepared just to immediately return to in-person meetings. You know, we have until the fifteenth. So, Mike, it's we can talk later if you want to have our meeting on June first, be live in person or on Zoom. But certainly after the fifteenth, we'll have to go back to in-person. And I just thought I'd list a couple of the highlights that I learned from the Department of Public Health today about this, about this full reopening. They talked a bit about how the state is on track to meet its goal set back in December to vaccinate over four million people by the first week of June. And that apparently the Commonwealth leads the nation in vaccinating residents with seventy-five percent of adults in the state receiving at least one dose. And to date, over four million residents have received a first dose with three point two million people fully vaccinated. And the number of new cases has dropped by eighty-nine percent since January, and our positivity rate is down to only one percent. Then the other kind of highlight from all this as it relates to lifting all the restrictions is that people do not vaccinated, fully vaccinated people do not need to wear masks indoors or outdoors. So that the way that they're sort of crafting their guidance is that fully vaccinated individuals no longer need to wear a face covering or social distance indoors or outdoors, except in certain, certain circumstances. And so where they talk about things like public and private transportation systems, healthcare facilities, and other settings hosting vulnerable populations like congregate care settings. In those specific settings, everybody will have to wear a mask. But fully vaccinated people will not need to wear masks indoors or outdoors. People that are not vaccinated, the state is advising that they should continue to wear face masks, face masks, and continue to socially distance in most settings. And then for those of you that have children in the schools right now, face coverings will continue to be required indoors for staff and students K to twelve for the remainder of the school year. But I think they are, they have eliminated that for outdoor settings for the schools. So that's all I have. I just thought I would give that update. And certainly for the public that's going to be watching our meetings, you know, we'll, we and all the other boards will go back to in-person very soon. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, minutes, review and approval of minutes of May fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion. Do I have a second? You're unmuted.
Sorry, didn't know it was on mute. I'll second that. Sorry.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Selectmen Penny?
Yes.
Selectmen Needham?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, under new business, annual appointments and reappointments.
Sure. So, excuse me. So in your packet, you have the listing of all the normal reappointments to all the boards and committees with the terms. And that is pretty standard. When we get to the new appointment vacancies, excuse me, after that, I can explain why that's on the agenda. But maybe for now, we should just start with the normal, you know, appointments and reappointments.
All right, I guess I'll read through all of them, and then we can just appoint all at once for all of them unless there's any kind of objection at any point. Okay. Okay, so Capital Planning Committee, three-year term, Chris Fulton. Community Preservation Committee, three-year term, Peter Yule. Community Preservation Committee, two-year term, John Hennessy. Conservation Commission, three-year term, Doug Gueme and Virginia Hoffman. Council on Adrian, three-year term, Agnes Smith and Frances Damon. Land Use Council, annual appointment, Galvin and Galvin. Tax Title Council, annual appointment, Attorney Laura Brown. Town and Labor Council, annual appointment, Clifford and Kenny. Cultural Council, Mary Ellen Concanon, Christine Flaherty. Director of Emergency Management, annual appointment, Chief Scott Duffy. Fence Bureau, annual appointment, Tom Rubel. Memorial Committee, annual appointment, Anthony Carter, John Melvin, Jeffy Nigerian, and Rich Waria. Open Space Committee, three-year term, George Anderson, Mike Bromberg, Don Khan. Rent Control, three-year term, Kimberly De Senzo. Landlord Representative, Leeser Woods. Rockland Recreation Board, three-year term, Rich Furlong and Sue Tasker. Sailor Waits and Measures Inspector, annual appointment, Tom Rubel. South Shore Recycling Cooperative, Christine Stewart. Taxation Committee, three-year term, Patty Penny. Tree Warden, annual appointment, Dave Taylor. Zoning Board of Appeals, five-year term, Rob Rosa. And Zoning Enforcement Officer, annual appointment, Tom Rubel. So I'll entertain a motion to approve, but Rich, maybe?
I have to abstain from voting on the, or appointing the taxation committee.
Perfect. Okay. So I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Tiffany.
And I'll second that with the abstaining for the taxation committee appointment.
And I'll make the second on the taxation committee appointment. Okay, so all those in favor? Selectmen Penny?
Yes.
Selectmen Needham?
Yes.
And myself. Okay. Next on the agenda.
Actually, Mike, does that, does that create an issue?
What's that?
In that there's only three of us here for, and I can't vote on the taxation committee?
Yeah, you're right. We may not have a quorum for that. So we might have to just table that.
May have to table that for the next meeting.
Kara's actually in a, she's at a wake right now for a selectman that passed away over in Holbrook, Mr. McGahey. So she'll be joining us shortly. So maybe we just come back to that once Kara gets on board.
Okay.
Okay, so moving along.
Can I get into the new appointments, Mike?
New appointment vacancies. Go ahead, Doug.
Thank you. And I should add as well that, you know, there's a number for the public that's watching. There are a number of boards and committees that have vacancies that, you know, we could really use people volunteering. And I know we've talked about many of them in the past, but in particular, I want to highlight the Charter Review Committee. That committee desperately needs some additional people to step up and volunteer. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. We've made some good, some good changes with our charter in the first round, but there's still a lot, a lot of work that needs to be done. And we need a number of new people on that committee. I think there's actually six vacancies on the Charter Review Committee. So anybody that's interested in town government, all you really need is some common sense, and you'll be a good fit. So I just would encourage people to look on our town website under the board and committee database, and you can see every single board and committee that has vacancies. The reason why we have these three listed on the agenda, they are vacancies for the Rent Control Board, the Plymouth County Advisory Board, and a Sewer Commissioner. So if I just take these one by one, the Rent Control Board has been appointed for a long time with our tax collector, Judy Hardigan, and she did an excellent job. But she has resigned for personal reasons from serving on that board. So we do need to fill that. Mike Mullin, a former selectman, was on the Plymouth County Advisory Board, and as he's no longer a selectman, we obviously should find someone else. And then lastly, the Sewer Commissioner, which I did put in your packet, one of the three elected sewer commissioners did resign, Ron, and his term goes for another year. And so the way that would work is it would be a joint appointment by both the Board of Selectmen and the two current sewer commissioners to fill that spot for the remainder of the term. And then that person would be up for election next year. So in our, in our town bylaws, there's a specific bylaw that requires that before the selectmen appoint vacancies like this, that we first should publicly notice them for at least two weeks prior to appointment. So the purpose of tonight was really just to put it on the agenda, publicly announce it, to comply with the town bylaws. And then we can, you know, see who volunteers and who, who you think is appropriate to appoint at an upcoming need.
That works. So, so there's a three positions, Rent Control Board, Plymouth County Advisory Board, and the Sewer Commissioner. So, okay, so we'll table that for our next meeting. Perfect. Thank you, Doug. So next on the agenda, the C D B G, we're passing over.
Yes, we're going to pass that over at the request of our consultant because the refinancing agency hasn't gotten back with all the required information. So we'll pass that over for now.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Luke Swickers, change of manager request.
Yeah, this is very straightforward. We have all the materials in your, in your packet. Everything's fine from a staff standpoint. Just a simple change of manager does not require a public hearing. We recommend approving it.
Make a motion.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor? Selectmen Penny?
Yes.
Selectmen Needham?
Yes.
Okay, and myself. That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Sewer and Golf Management, Inc., doing business as Rockland Golf Course, one-day early opening liquor request. Doug?
Sure. So it's not often that in a televised Board of Selectmen meeting, I can talk about a shotgun event with Bloody Marys and screwdrivers, but that's what this one is. So the golf course is looking to have a, to amend their license to have a one-day early, early, early serving to host their Eagles, which is a local group for a tournament that's been held for many years. So they want to move it up a little earlier, just so they can, you know, serve the patrons. So it's something that is not a big deal, and they filled out all the appropriate paperwork, and we recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Selectmen Penny?
Yes.
Selectmen Needham?
Yes.
And myself. That's unanimous. Okay, thanks, Doug. Okay, next on the agenda, other new business not reasonably anticipated.
Sure. Thanks, Mike. So we have had some new questions that have come up recently regarding our water supply, water capacity in town, the ability to have new connections, et cetera. So if it's okay with you, I did ask the Avonken Rockland Joint Water Works Superintendent Joe LaPointe to come on just to give a brief update and to try to clarify the facts so that the community does understand, you know, what's happening with capacity and what the Water Department is doing. Any other questions that you might have for them? But the reason why it wasn't anticipated is new information's been coming out, and we just wanted to get ahead of it.
Thanks, Doug. So Joe, you know, the reason I wanted you on was, you know, recently, you know, I seen some pictures that came through with residents' concerns about the level of their reservoir. And I was just wondering, obviously, you know, you were back, you were here with us a couple of months back, and you spoke about it being down, I think, like eight inches. You know, we've had some significant rainfall over the last month or so.
That's eight, eight feet, not eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant eight feet. My apologies. But we've had some significant rainfall over the last, you know, month or so, and just maybe some updates on that. But, you know, also maybe just speak to, you know, the setup of the reservoir, you know, and the, the capacity of the tanks that are below it, actually, just so that people, you know, kind of understand that just what they see on the surface isn't the entirety of our water supply, you know?
Correct. So the Hingham Street Reservoir is only one. We have the Pembroke Great Sandy Bottom Pond, which that itself is, it's down two feet, but the pond is so expansive, two feet is a lot of water. Two feet from where we started last year. Since two thousand nineteen, we haven't had much precipitation. So last year, we started out a little lower than usual. This year, at this point of May first, we started out almost seven feet lower than we were last year at May first. And, you know, we held our breath at the end of the year last year in October, that the Hingham Street Reservoir, once that water gets below the intake pipe, we can't pull any more water in. So hence, that's why we have, we're going to keep the water ban on. We're not going to bust people's chops if they want to water their gardens or their flowers with a handheld hose or whatever. But it's the irrigation systems that are killing us. And we think last year, with the COVID, everybody being home really killed us. Between the two towns, we pumped over fifty million gallons more than average last year. So that didn't really help with the recovery. The wintertime, we had one major snowstorm. We've had, we've had a couple significant rainstorms in April. But, you know, that, if you get an inch of rain, that doesn't mean you're going to get an inch of water in your reservoir. The only thing that did, which was great, was March, April, and May, we've held the same level. So we haven't dropped with, with that water, which is great. We're just going to encourage everybody to conserve. We're going to keep the water ban on. That's, that's about where we're at. You know, I know on the Union Point Agenda today, Doug, they asked, what's the cure? How can we help the water department? Well, if you can make it rain, you'll really help us. I mean, that's the bottom line. The more rain we get, the less we have to count on the groundwater refilling that reservoir. So we take, we just don't want to get behind the eight ball. So we're taking it cautious through the year. I mean, if we have another summer like we had last year, I mean, it's going to be eighty-five all week this week. So that's basically where we're at with the, with the reservoirs. As far as, even if we were full, Mike, you, you were saying, with our capacity underneath, we can only process so much water through that, through the filtering system. So, you know, if we get overwhelmed, you know, in the Clearwells, which we can, they're fourteen feet deep, it's two million gallons of water that we process and we store underneath the plant. If the Clearwells get down, you know, three or four feet, then you start to worry that you're not going to be able to keep up with demand. Thank God, nighttime hits and it slows down a little bit. That, you know, basically, you know, it's a double-edged sword. You can have all the water you want. It's, it's how quick we can process it and get it back out into the system. That is why, you know, the April meeting, the commissioners voted to do a supply and demand study. So we hired H two Olson Engineering to do our supply and demand study. They're going to look at what we're using now, projects the board has already approved in the last, I mean, this project's that is six years old out there that haven't started taking water yet, that have already been approved. We can't pull those approvals back. We are looking into going forward. If we approve a project, they have two years to complete it. So that water is not hanging out there. Those are different options they're looking at. That's why we put a temporary moratorium on the hookups. If, if we find that the supply and the demand is still going to be below a withdrawal permit, then we can open it back up. Like I said, last year, we went over the withdrawal permit, and we're contributing that to the COVID, everybody being home, using the water. We took a three-year average. We were a little under. So we're going to let the engineers give us, you know, numbers that we can rely on, and then we'll move forward from there. So, and as far as the PFOS issue at the Hingham Street Plant, we sent out public education. We said we might have to follow up with the public notice that we did violate the M C L, which we did. Those notices are going to go out this week. The good news, not to sugarcoat any of that news, the state lowered it from seventy pots per trillion to twenty pots per trillion. So now everybody has to meet the twenty pots per trillion for the PFOS chemical. Our high reading was twenty-five point eight seven pots per trillion. Our three-month average ended up being twenty-two point eight, which is two point eight pots per trillion over. That was our March sample. We just took the April sample after we enacted a new carbon treatment. We're putting powdered activated carbon, we're injecting it into where we put all the rest of the chemicals in the treatment plant. That has brought up, our April reading was down to twenty point four. So point four pots per trillion over. We had done the right direction, but we're still over. We have petitioned the Department of Public, the D E P, to move our injection site for the pack. We hired divers. They went out, they tapped our intake pipe at the head wall coming in from the reservoir. What we can do is we're going to try to inject the pack at the intake pipe while the pumps are on. It'll give the chemical more time to work all the way through the plant process, and hopefully we'll be down below the twenty, which will be a great short-term fix. But the long-term fix, we've been looking at, we've been talking with the engineers, and as I discussed earlier in the last meeting, the long-term fix is to have two twelve-by-six filter vessels installed at the Hingham Street Treatment Plant. We got rough estimates from the engineers, and just to buy the vessels, have them piped in and everything, is going to be over one point five million, and that's not even getting them inside a building. Once they're there, we have to house them. We have to put a building up, or an addition on the plant. So the long-term fix is going to be, we're estimating right now between the Myers-Abt Plant and Hingham Street Plant, almost five million dollars. We did get a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollar grant from D E P to, for the design of the Myers- Abt Plant, which would be great. We can, we can recover some of the money we've already spent. We've just applied, the Baker Polito just came out with a two million dollar D E P grant that we can, we apply for by July eighth, and it's going to cover our remediation, what we're doing at Hingham Street right now. That's, we can get a total one hundred and fifty thousand if we get the grant. But any money's good money to make. So basically, that's where we're standing. Like I said, the public notices probably be in the mail tomorrow afternoon, just so you know, they're going to be out there. It's going to be the same letter we said before. It's going to explain everything, soup to nuts. And I'd really like to stress, do not listen to social media. If you have a question, call the Water Department. We've got a ton of calls that, they're going off the social media. They call, they're all, they're all wrangled up when they call us. By the time they get off the phone with our treatment operators, who explain it soup to nuts, they're very calm, and they know where we're going. You can't rely on the social media. There's a number on the letter, call the Water Department. Last time we were overwhelmed with calls, we made sure we got back to every person. Might have not been the same day, but we got back to every person. So basically, you know, if you have a question, call the Water Department. We're going to give you the honest answer.
And that's, that's really why I wanted you to, you know, have the opportunity to speak tonight, just to kind of put that out there now for anybody that might be wanting to maybe save some, some of the confusion and panic. And I don't want to say control the narrative, but, but kind of put people at ease a little bit as, and educate them on the subject, just so that they're fully aware, you know, from a full transparent standpoint, that you're available to answer whatever questions that they might have.
Absolutely.
So with that said, Rich, Tiffany, anybody have any questions for Joe?
I don't have any, any questions. Joe, just as last time, great job, kind of, kind of explaining the situation. Certainly, you know, part of this is mother nature that we don't have control over. But you guys seem to have, you know, the, the situation in control and plans in place. So I just want to say thank you. And, you know, to the people out there, kind of reiterate, you know, Joe's point, don't listen to the social media. It's not based on any facts. Call the number, they'll, they'll get you the right information.
And I, I would also just like to thank you. And there, there is a lot of fear out on social media. And to be able to have you address and to clarify what, what you have has been very helpful. So thank you. And it's a pleasure to meet you by Zoom.
Yeah, thank you. Pleasure to meet you.
So Joe, I just, again, you know, when we talked last time when you were with us, you know, I said that, you know, as I saw things come up, or, you know, it might be a good idea to have you on a little bit more regularly. So.
Yep. Anytime you need me, I'm here.
Expect a phone call again at some point as, as things persist going forward, you know, and an update as we get into the summer, and maybe just talk about, you know, capacity and water levels and stuff like that, just so the general public knows, and, and they have all the information straight from, straight from you, you know?
Yep. And any, any of the board members that, you know, have a question, give me a call. I'm usually there.
Absolutely. Thank you, Joe. Joe, I'm going to ask you to hang on for, for this next segment, too, just, just in case there's any questions, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on. Next on the agenda, under Old Business, Senior Affordable Housing Project Massachusetts Local Initiative Program, L I P, AKA Friendly Forty-B, four oh three Union Street, Sixth El Cradell, Holy Family Church Site, requested letter of support. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. So as the board recalls, several months ago, the developers working with Holy Family made a really excellent, very detailed presentation to the board with their proposal to convert the former Holy Family School into an affordable, to adaptively reuse the building and create, I think it's twenty-seven affordable senior housing units. And they've, they've done a bunch of community outreach since that time as well. I want to say just sort of for, for context, I believe I can speak for both Jen, as well as myself, that, you know, we personally really support this project. You know, there's a lot of affordable housing projects that are, that are difficult and controversial because of constrained sites and, and scale and mass and the size, et cetera. But this is just, I think, a wonderful proposal to adaptively reuse, you know, an iconic structure in town. It's an appropriate size and scale, and it meets, you know, a good need. And it's a very, you know, respectable developer who wants to do it, you know, in a cooperative manner, seeking a lip project, as opposed to just sort of forcing something on the town. So it's, from our perspective, it's, it's a very positive thing. It's a good project that'll help the town meet its, meet its needs. When they first presented to the board, they did mention that they would ultimately like to get a letter of support. And I think, Mike, you didn't want to commit at the time to doing that because you wanted to take some time to really review the material and get some community feedback, et cetera. And so, so now that it's been a few months, and they've done some community outreach, you know, they're, they're again asking for, for a letter of support. They included a rough draft in the packet, which I have, and if it's, and they're here, obviously, Jennifer Connolly's on this Zoom, and you, she can speak for herself. But the, the main purpose was to kind of confirm if, if the board does support it, and if so, to have you, you know, vote to authorize to send in the letter and any other requests that Jennifer might have.
Okay. Thanks, Doug. So Jennifer, let me just ask you, as to where you guys are in, in the process, have you guys, you guys have been before water and sewer?
We have not yet. Most recently, we submitted our historic tax credit applications in April. We have official action status with Mass Housing. We have a team assigned there, and we also have a team assigned from D H C D, where we're going to be asking for nine percent tax credits for this deal. And then with the advice of the board, we hosted community meetings in both March, and then last week, we sent them at two different times, one in the evening, one in the afternoon. We had particularly good turnout at the last one, which was the afternoon one. Representative David Decost joined us for that, and we had questions from the community that, you know, that we were able to answer. They were supportive of it. And we were able to show the renderings for the project and unit layouts, similar to what we had presented to the board, with some greater detail. And those went very well. And we wanted to come back to you now that we have. you know, had those community sessions and see if the board would be willing to move the project forward.
So, you know, I do have, I do have one question as to the makeup of the residents at the, at the site. How would you determine somebody's ability to reside there and what list would you be working off of?
Sure. So it would be seniors, so it would be people who are age sixty-two and over. They would be income qualified and we have been working with the Rockland Housing Authority. We're partnered with them at Spring Gate Apartments in Rockland and would be working with them also at the Schoolhouse Apartments or the Holy Family School. And for the initial lease up of the building, we would be able to provide preference to Rockland residents. So we would work with them cooperatively from their waitlists. And then moving forward from there, they would share their waitlist with us for, you know, seniors who were income qualified. And then they could make referrals to us at that time. The way that the different programs are set up after the initial lease up, we can't give preference based on residency within Rockland, but initially we're able to.
Okay, so, so that's, that's a commitment from, from you and your group that, that residents on the Rockland Housing Authority list that qualified seniors would have right of first refusal to, to move into, or right of acceptance, right of first approval, I guess, to.
Yes. Yes, we, we want to extend that. We would extend it further, but we're not able to because of the way that the programs are set up. But we've worked with Executive Director Riley and her boards, discussed the project at length with them. They've toured the site with us and we've discussed the administrative components of it as far as how they would share and direct their waitlist to us. And we've worked cooperatively with them at Spring Gate Apartments and we continue that here.
Any, any questions from any other members? Jen, I think I just saw you throw your hand up as well.
Yeah, sorry, Mike. Just one question for clarification. Jennifer, are all the units, all twenty-seven units being, are you giving local preference to all units or is it a percentage of the units?
I'd, I'd have to check that when you're raising, but I believe we can give local preference just for the lease up. So the initial, I can check with Joe Armstrong. He's our tax credit consultant and he may have further details on that.
Thank you.
And they are all one bedroom units and there is a set aside for handicapped disabled units as well within those.
Obviously, the preference of, of this board, I think, would be that it'd be a hundred percent preference to Rockland Housing Authority West. Okay, so with that, Rich, Tiffany, any, any questions?
So, well, I don't know if it's a question or a comment. So, you know, obviously, we have seen a, an influx of forty-B projects proposed within the town. You know, and as the board of selectmen, we all know this really isn't our purview per se. It's, you know, zoning, boarding, planning rather, water soar. And I'm leery in setting some precedence. So while personally may have a favor to this project versus another project, when you, when you start to say, you know, as the board start to pick, oh no, I, I want this forty-B and I don't want this forty-B, what does that set and, and how does that impact the town? I would, I would rather have this project go through the normal process. Let all the boards that, you know, are, are tied into it, let them go through the process and let this play out. That's just my own personal opinion. If we start making recommendations, what happens with the other fortyBs that come in, they're going to want, you know, their approval, what does that open? You know, what, what can worms does that open? Because there's a lot of them out there.
Mike, if I can just make a comment to that. So I understand what your statement, Rich, just a little food for thought. If they, if you have a local, it's not a local preference, excuse me, a friendly forty-B, you, you as a board are, it gives you the opportunity to extend some degree of control over a project. So to your point about choosing one forty-B project over another forty-B project, you have the ability to say, we think, you know, this project is right for this area or this project is right by its scale or its preference. And that, if that project is successful as it moves through the state approval process, you've moved the town a little bit closer to that ten percent goal with some degree of control where if a forty-B goes through, what's otherwise the same exact process, just without the support of the community. It's, it's in some ways a little less control. Just.
So I understand your point. I, I understand your, so I, yes, if you go into the, that, you know, the, the scope of the project or the intent of the project, you know, potentially may have benefits for it, that's fine. I, I just become very leery on what, what our official recommendation would be, right? You know, saying, hey, we're in favor of this, whatever. I just really think we've got to be careful about what we do here. You know, so maybe it's to your point, you know, Jen, where you said, you know, the, the location, the scope of this, we're in favor of this, of this type of a development, something to that effect. I just really, I just think we really need to be careful going down this.
I actually just have one question for regarding this. And with the twenty-seven units, have you, do you have a, an understanding or a, a waitlist per se, or just an overall overall information on, on how many people are looking for this resource in the area? Because I, I know that there's, there's a, a need, an overall need for, for more senior housing. So I was just curious about your research on that. Because if, if we are able to provide that resource to people that need it, it would be, it's, it's something that I'm, I'm definitely curious about.
Sure. So the research that we've conducted has been specific more to the South Shore generally. And there we found that there's a significant need for affordable housing and more so within like senior groups. And in talking to Director Riley, she has found that she has a number of applicants that come to her specifically wanting senior housing and not being able to find that, that it's not available within Rockland, but also the surrounding communities. And then the seniors are having considerable issues as far as the amount of income that they are putting towards housing or their monies towards housing and then impacting them otherwise. So that they're making choices, you know, related to food and healthcare and things like that. So for her, this was, you know, I'd want her to speak on her own behalf. But in speaking with her, she had said that specifically senior housing was in need and having these one bedroom units available would greatly assist the authority and the, the people of Rockland that she works with.
And if you could clarify one more thing as well, you'd mentioned that there's going to be a holdback for the accessible, for, how does that work in terms of people that, that would need some handicap accessible units?
Sure. So within the plan, we have accessible units, so twenty-seven units total. And I believe it's two units that would be fully accessible. We're also able to make reasonable accommodations that are requested. That would be things, you know, like grab bars and, and things that help people to live independently and safely at home. So we're able to make, you know, adjustments to units as they exist. And then also have the, the specific units set aside for, you know, handicap disabled.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Jennifer, I, I appreciate your time and I appreciate you coming before us. And I appreciate the presentation that you guys gave us a couple of months back. I am however reluctant tonight to sign any kind of an official letter of support just for the fact, one, again, we do not have a complete board with us tonight.
Okay.
And I don't think it would be appropriate that we make the decision as three people when there's two other members that couldn't be with us. One is in Texas right now and the other one is in line at a wake in, in Holbrook and out of town. So, so I, I'll have to, I guess, table, table any kind of a formal letter. But, you know, to, to Rich's point, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of other projects that have been coming before us and, and our message, our message all along has been that, that it's not our decision. And, you know, as I've said to other developers that have come before us, that they're, they're welcome to apply. You know, and there's nothing, nothing that, that we can, you know, say or do about it, but they have to follow the process. And the process, you know, unfortunately doesn't include the Board of Selectmen. So we, we could come back to this at some other point, but, you know, and I'd say definitely, you know, you're welcome to go through the process, just as all the other developers do. I understand the difference in your project versus some of the other developers, whereas you're willing to work with the town and there is a need for it in the town. So, so with that, again, any, any kind of formal recommendation, we'll have to table that for, for a night. That the full board is here and I apologize for the others not being here tonight with you on board, so.
Thank you. It was, it's very important to us to work cooperatively with the town and with your board. And I look forward to the opportunity, returning another night and discussing it with your full board.
Thank you, Jennifer. I apologize.
Thank you. Not a problem. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, other old business not reasonably anticipated. Doug?
I have none.
Number six, Town Administrators Report and Correspondence. Doug?
Sure. Thanks, Mike. Just a couple of items tonight. One is just an update that we've been working as a team on creating the town's first comprehensive set of financial policies. And we have been working with the Department of Revenue on that with our whole financial team. And our town accountant, Elizabeth Seleski, who's on this Zoom, has been taking the lead role on that. And I just want to thank her for it. And over the next few months, we're going to finalize this. And we'll, we'll bring back the, our final recommended document to present to you to hopefully approve, unless you have any changes that you would like to make to it. But it's, it's a, it's a big, it's a big project, but it's, I think you're going to be very pleased with what we present to you in the coming months. Regarding COVID vaccine clinics, the town actually held a clinic today. Today's May eighteenth. And we're going to be holding an additional one on May twentieth. On May twentieth, the vaccine clinic will be from ten AM to twelve PM. It's going to be the Moderna vaccine. We have thirty doses available. Anyone from the public that's eligible to receive a vaccine, we encourage them to call the Rockland Board of Health, seven eight one eight seven one eighteen seventy-four, extension one zero zero five, to set up the appointment for May twentieth. So we're excited that we had some extra doses available that we can make available to the general public. Moving off of COVID, I thought we'd mentioned that Jen and I recently met via Zoom with Senator Keenan's new chief of staff and had an excellent discussion with him. And one small outcome of that conversation was that we were very quickly able to put in a request for a fifty thousand dollar earmark in the FY twenty-two state budget for manhole and catch basin, catch basin structure replacements. And the reason why we chose that after talking to, you know, water, sewer and the highway department was that manhole and catch basin structures are really going to have cross benefits. You know, it's going to help both our roadway and our drainage systems. And it's also going to help the sewer plant by reducing the amount of inflow and infiltration into the, you know, the sewer plant. So we put that fifty thousand dollar earmark request in with Senator Keenan and we're cautiously optimistic that we're going to get that passed in the, in the state budget. And then lastly, I want to recognize the Rockland Fire Department. The Fire Department recently received an award in recognition from National Grid as one of only a handful of departments throughout the entire state of Massachusetts and all of Rhode Island, in which every single member of the department has completed National Grid's pipeline training. And Chief Duffy wanted me to express how proud he is of the training officers for their efforts in getting everyone to complete the program. Lieutenant Jonathan Hickey was a driving force behind the program and he was the day officer and training officer. And then Lieutenant Charlie Williams is the current day officer, training officer. And he was instrumental in completing Lieutenant Hickey's efforts after his transition to shift officer. And Chief Duffy also wanted me to express how proud he is of all the members of the department for their willingness to train and continue their learning with this important work. So just want to give a shout out to the Fire Department. That's all I have.
Thank you, Doug. Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the board of selectmen and the opinion, the comments of only the individual member. Ms. Needham?
Hi, Mike. No comments this evening.
Thank you, Tiffany. Salkman Penny?
I have no comments.
Okay. Wow, quiet, quiet group tonight. And now I'm going to follow up with the exact same. Maybe I will have some comments. So I, I have been speaking to a number of residents since town meeting and I think we've had some, some really good feedback from, from some of those residents. And, and I do hope to meet with them personally, hopefully within the next week or so. And, and kind of just, just listen to what, what they see as, as some of the priorities and, and try to see if they, they match what, what we've been doing as a team for the last couple of years. And, and maybe we can explain some of the things that we've been doing to them as well. So with that, I will entertain a motion to enter executive session. Purpose number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position, AFSCME clerical unit, and to review and approval of executive session minutes, April twentieth, twenty twenty-one and May fourth, twenty twenty-one, not to reconvene.
Motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Salkman Penny?
Yes.
Salkman Needham?
Yes.
And myself. All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.